All right, uh, welcome everyone. It is the regular city council meeting for Monday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. I will call the meeting in a quarter. You can all stand up and say the closing please.
The United States of America, who truly follow, which stands one nation, under God, individual, whoever's business is wrong.
Thank you. Uh, may I roll call please Cheryl?
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Rich Peterson?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, number four, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns? If not, I will ask for motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Rich Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, number five, um, do we have anybody sign up Cheryl?
The Jeff Williams here, please. Did you have any comments Jeff?
No, not really, just aim to observe and we're gonna have a public hearing, so I just wanted to see what that was about.
Okay, sounds good. Awesome. Okay, so number five, we will skip then, uh, and move on to number six, the consent agenda. Any questions? Again, any questions, concerns?
I had a question, but we told Teresa it was very multi- electric side of it.
Okay. Okay, um, in that case then, can I have a, have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
And second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Rich Peterson?
Yes.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number seven, discuss and consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, approving the final plat for the West Side subdivision. And Mark doesn't look like he's here, so, um, pretty much what we had discussed at the last meeting with the final mentions are on there. Everybody got a chance to look at that.
Yeah, I think it's everything I want to talk about.
Yeah, it seems to me we decided to go with the little bit bigger lots and, and, uh, decrease the, the number by one, two.
So I hear that lot A that kind of represents the street or future street there, correct? Cheryl, did he say that Barker didn't call or any, any comments, anything?
He-
I think it's pretty straightforward.
He called and asked to talk to Teresa and I explained the situation and he was wondering if he needed to be here. Um, not sure what they discussed, but apparently she must have said that wasn't, everything looked in order and-
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's pretty much, this is just the, the final, uh, final plat of what we kind of discussed. The end result of what we discussed at the last meeting basically, so nothing's, to my knowledge, changed at all, so. And yeah, that lot A would be, that would be the, the future.
That'd be that East West Street.
Street, yeah.
Yeah, what, it has to be Neil Street as well.
Yeah, yeah. So how, I guess, you know, moving forward, that would be implemented, I don't know, I guess that would be, we'd have to kind of discuss that moving forward. If we want to just gravel it or leave it grass?
Well, I guess that depends on some buys lot one and lot two and-
Right, I think, yeah, you put some, just put some stone down for now and it's, that is what it is.
Yeah.
You decide to go farther.
Right.
And I want something, because like we talked, we don't want, you know, you want your homes facing McNeil Street, not facing, directions facing West Street.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to give them access.
Right.
Yeah, we're gonna have to give them access.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be a little bit hidden cost, but yeah, I, some of the buys point on bill, I think we cross that bridge when we get there.
And you gotta, you gotta get a base anyway for a street, so.
Right.
But yeah, if I want her to keep driving, all right?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, do we have any, any other concerns or questions or anything regarding the final plat?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution, uh, twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, approving the final plat for the West Side subdivision.
Okay, and second?
Second.
And roll call please.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Rich Peterson?
Yes.
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Okay, so then we will move on to eight and discuss and consider approval of the price per lot, uh, for the West Side subdivision. And Teresa included in the packet there, um, I believe she talked to Laura's Harry. Just kind of, just kind of got a little bit of, of, uh, of his, uh, knowledge a little bit.
She talked to him on how he came up with lot prices and he gave her the idea of averaging previous subdivisions and, um, yeah.
Makes sense.
Came up with an average cost of two tens, kind of setting a base price for possibly lots one and two on the McNeil, West Side.
So I guess it's up to council, um, you know, what they feel, if those prices are ballpark or if they, you know, wanna stick with a, like we did with, with Harvest Heights and just pick a number and stick with it for, you know, at least the first two, I guess, depending on moving forward.
You know, I think we probably should charge a little bit, because they're a little bit bigger lots or different area, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um, I'd say the city looks at it, trying to get as much money as we can to recoup it, right? But also, I don't think we can overcharge it. We're trying to get people to buy lots and kind of get the ball rolling, correct? I'm in between like the thirty-five, forty thousand range, that's kind of where I'm at. Um, I guess I could probably talk to either way. What are your guys' thoughts?
I had, just from last meeting, I talked, numbers and stuff, and then I thought about it and even before I saw Teresa sheet, I was thinking around that forty thousand. And kind of seeing her average cost, you know, comes in, in a ballpark of that, you know, thirty-nine to forty-three. I think there's, you know, there's different amenities there. We talked about the bigger lots, so we lost some lot size, you know, park and all that right there, the amenities. I don't think, you know, asking in forty is a bad price, but I don't know that we should, you know, are we asking just for these two lots now? Just for a price of these two lots and as we develop later, we'll decide what the price on the remainder of them should be, right?
We're setting a precedent.
Well, you are, but things change.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess to me, it just depends on how soon, you know, the rest of it. To me, I guess it's just, and I get, I totally agree with you, but you are setting a precedent, but at the same time too, it all boils down to a time factor. I mean, if it's not, if it's not developed for another six, seven, eight years.
Property values and tip increases.
I mean, that, that's a pretty good, you know, reason right there to, to say, to reevaluate, you know, what, what the first two were and-
Well, I think that was our idea, is to try to sell these first two lots, so you're gonna just want the interest and then pay down the loan and kind of get a-
Get a head start.
Get a head start, you know? Well, let me sell these two lot, I mean, who knows, we might even be on the council when, you know, the street come, if it ever does.
Exactly, right.
Rich, how do you guys think?
Anybody else say?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm kind of with you, it's obviously the more you can get, the better, but then, you know, I think that forty thousand dollar price tag is gonna be, you know, it might not be that big of a difference money-wise, but it's just, you know, something about it, it might scare more people off, you know, for me, but. I don't know, I'm probably with JT, I would think thirty-five to forty would be, you know, the range you have to begin to-
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I think we should at least ask thirty-five. I think forty probably might, might top, you know, for it.
Yeah, and I guess, just when you look at the, the cost of the thirty thousand, you know, that's set from Harvest Heights, you know, just to go over it again, I mean, you look at the, think of the land cost incorporated and then the infrastructure, you know, and that thirty thousand was a, pretty much a halfway.
It's easy, it's easy to justify what we're talking about, if, just to say if you could go to forty, because you're at forty, thirty-nine, seven to forty-three. So, I mean, we're on the, we're on the low end of what she's got down for, for the average.
Right.
Compared to Harvest Heights.
Right.
It's a good way to, I mean, that, there's a justification there, why are we asking what we're asking?
Yeah, right here is the form, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, it is five or, I'm gonna, say we're all stuck at like thirty-five, but yeah, maybe we should go forty, is five or you're gonna make a difference for someone? That's gonna buy a lot, I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't want to make or break evidence.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna make or break the city, nor, nor is it gonna make the homeowner, it's gonna build a seven hundred thousand lot of homeowner, probably.
I was gonna say with the cost of everything else, what it is now.
By either one.
Yeah, five thousand, it's, I don't know, in the grand scheme of things, if it's a big deal or not, yeah.
Rich, any thoughts?
I'm pretty much in the same boat with you guys. I'm gonna put forty or I can just leave and go.
I just think our lot size, if we wouldn't have increased our lot size, it'd be different, but we increased our lot size substantially, I think there should be some-
Yeah.
Cost to, you know, or-
And we did that for our different options and the different-
Exactly.
You know?
All good reasons.
Yeah, definitely good reasons, so.
I think at forty, we're still, we're still, we're still grabbing the bargain. My pleasure, you can buy a lot for forty.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I can, I'm, yeah, forty's fine with me, I mean. So yeah, slot one, we got forty-three, and we, I don't, you know, the more I think about it, forty's not bad.
Any other ways?
Have you find that?
Any senses?
Well, I guess we set them at forty and it goes a couple of years and we, and no one buys one.
Right, yeah, they don't move it.
Maybe one, I don't know, three, I don't know, I think that someone's gonna buy that and, and, you know, put a house, everything out there. And you have everything right there.
Yeah.
And hopefully do so, hopefully. And I guess as a city, we gotta, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. And this wasn't really, it was kind of an idea, but it just kind of got kicked off. It's gotta see if anybody would buy these two lots, right? It's kind of a trial.
Yep.
Okay, and discussion needed on that or someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, set the price for lot one and two of the West Side subdivision to forty thousand dollars.
Second?
I'll second.
And roll call?
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Rich Peterson?
Yes.
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number nine, uh, public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, forms of contract and estimate of costs for the water quality restoration project. Um, so I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
And roll call?
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Rich Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, so unless there's any, did you receive any, anything from the public of any questions or anything?
No comments or questions.
Unless there's anybody here that wants to make a comment? Um, okay, so I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second? Roll call please.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Richard Peterson?
Yes.
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on to ten, um, approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-eight, finally approving and confirming plans, specifications, forms of contract and estimate of cost for the water quality restoration project. So we're finally, finally here, we're ready to, uh, we approve this, go, uh, out for bid. Uh, for the retention part of the, the Harvest Heights.
I can't believe we're at this point.
It seemed like it ever would come.
So soon, uh.
Do they have any questions regarding anything?
Do you have a, uh, a late start, late start date and stuff on that?
I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything either, just what completed, like a late start date, completion date. I know we talked about it.
We talked about it.
Yeah.
This fall on thing.
Yeah, he, he gave out dates at a previous meeting, I don't remember.
It was all kind of trying to do it this year, yeah, right?
Believe it.
Yeah, they never get fined or something if it didn't get done or-
Yeah, it was November fourth and I don't know.
I think it was out, out seeding or something, so.
Right.
Oh, that's right, we talked about seeding times again and we said, I'll look at where the seed came up in Harvest Heights.
Yes.
So completion must have been around that November time.
Yeah, it was really November last year.
Okay, that's the only question I, I can, I can add on it.
Well, I'm assuming if it's, if all this goes out to bid, that's gotta be probably in that.
It'll all be in the bid.
It's all in the bid, okay, this is, needs to be done.
Yeah, I don't think that-
Like some contractors will be able to meet those deadlines or something, or they can't be on bid on it.
Right.
Yeah. Well, we'll be lucky if people bid on it.
Yeah, hopefully that's not an issue.
Yeah. So we need a motion then for-
Approving the resolution.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two forty-eight, no, I'm sorry, forty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, forty-eight.
Okay, second?
Second.
And roll call please.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Peterson?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Uh, yes.
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Um, okay, um, number eleven, approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-nine, setting date for public hearing on the urban renewal plan amendment for August eighth. That is, correct me if I'm wrong Cheryl, but that is for the developer, how it's-
Plastics.
That's for Plastics?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I was thinking it was for the-
Yeah, but how's this, something to do with the-
Yeah, that's what I thought.
If you look on the first page, top right, it says Plastics.
Oh, okay, okay. And this is just for their, uh-
Put adding them to the urban renewal, right?
Yeah, so they can get their, their expansion.
For the tax to-
Tax.
To-
To, yeah. Anybody have any questions? Anything regarding that? Again, we're just setting the public hearing for August eighth.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-nine, setting the date for a public hearing on the urban renewal plan amendment for August eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second?
Uh, second.
And roll call please.
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Peterson?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Number twelve, uh, approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty, setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Plastics Unlimited Incorporated in, including annual appropriation tax increment payments, uh, for August eighth as well.
Takes one here or the other, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you gotta have them.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty, setting date, uh, with Plastics on August eighteenth.
Second.
August eighteenth.
Sorry, okay, um, roll call please.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Richard Peterson?
Yes.
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Number thirteen, approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, and ordinance repealing the pressed code of ordinances by amending and repealing a portion of Title Four, uh, physical environment, chapter seven, utilities billing charges, six dash seven dash eleven, reviews, collection rates. So again, this is just the second reading of that ordinance that we-
I'm assuming no comments on the first?
I haven't heard any comments, and again, it's just the addition of the adjust industrial, um, rate. If anyone has six dumpsters or more at a hundred and fifty, that's the only addition.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion through the second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero seven.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Jason Thompson?
Yes.
Adam Ryder?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Uh, yes.
Richard Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, fourteen, we will table, um, uh, till next meeting. That was basically, uh, to talk about dating to a contract with, with Dana, to have her market and push the Harvest Heights, um, lots, but we'll wait on that one.
Can we talk about it?
Um, we can, and we can, we can talk about it and then just not-
Not take action.
We'll just not take action.
No, nobody else was interested in?
Not to my knowledge, um, she had, so I'll read the, uh, fourteen was discuss and consider approval of signing a contract with this, associated realtor, Dana Olson. Um, so Teresa had been in contact with some realtors around the area about, uh, signing to agreement, you know, with Harvest Heights lots, trying to get them to basically a compensation for-
Help marketing.
Yeah, selling a lot of their, or lots. Um, from feedback I had heard, Dana was really the only one that had shown any interest in, in signing a contract. It was talked about, uh, it was thrown out, uh, two and a half, um, percent commission on, on sale. Um, so I think that was, what was that, six hundred bucks, I think. Um, Dana came back with three percent, um, so, uh, I talked to Teresa this morning. Um, Dana had apparently talked to Norm, Norm thought more of the four percent range, um, and we threw back, uh, the three, three and a half, somewhere in that ballpark. So, I don't know where that went, if she ever got ahold of, of Dana this afternoon or today.
That's my knowledge, yeah.
Okay, so that's kind of where, where we're at there, so.
Yeah, I'm all for Dana, just want to make sure that, that all our realtors had the opportunity to, give it an option, an opportunity if they want to.
Yep, and to my knowledge, they were, um, like I said, Dana was the one with the, kind of showing any interest, so.
It's usually what, six percent on a home or something if you're gonna do it?
Six or seven, yeah.
Yeah, so they're half, let's say half, yeah.
Man, I don't think it hurts.
Your honor, you said on the morning, just you've had here.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it gets, you know, and they're the ones who deal more directly with people, obviously interested in buying a house or a lot or whatever, so they know, you know, who's looking versus the city, you know, you know, can try to push them as much as they can, but at the same time, they're not out there, you know, beating the ground.
Yeah.
Every day like a realtor.
The city hall isn't our realtors either, you know, then maybe Dana could feel, you know, some calls or questions and kind of go between, maybe.
Exactly, which would be nice, but we put her on our website today to get contact, whoever it was Dana.
Yeah.
Or if they call, they can give her Dana's information, she can handle those at that time.
Yeah, that stuff, and kind of take it off the tree.
Yep. Questions, yes. Yep, so that's, that's where that stands right now, like I said, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll table that for, for next meeting.
Find out what Norman Dana just came up with.
Yeah, and I'm sure we'll have a better idea of what.
Dana sells on this one.
Contract, do you think?
Dana sells to, um, seven.
Yeah, she's with the association.
I can't answer that, I don't know if there was a, a certain year.
Was there a time, a time limit on this, like, they were a contract with Dana for a year or?
I haven't seen an actual draft of a contract, so I'm, I'm not sure.
I don't know that it's, I don't know that that's been talked about.
I think you want to put a timeframe on it, you know, I, I know, on homes usually about six months, isn't it, if you go sell a home? A lot of them seem like a normal time, six months, I'm not saying it should be six months, I think much longer than that, but-
Right.
Probably shouldn't be six years.
Right, 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 exactly. Yeah, I feel that's a, that's a good, that's a good point.
What's a good time for, you said a couple of years?
I, I'm not sure what, maybe have, maybe have Dana come back to us, whatever she thinks proposes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from her.
I would think at least a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, yeah, I would say anywhere from a year to three, that's, yeah, that's me. Yeah, again, we'll, we'll pick this back up next meeting and hopefully have a little bit more information on it. So, okay, we will move down to fifteen, um, an update on the comprehensive plan. Do you have anything on that Cheryl?
Um, didn't have a lot to present, just Teresa wanted me to state that there is a survey that is gonna be coming out in the newspaper. It is also accessible on our Facebook page, there's a link on our Facebook and the website for the survey that's coming out for, so.
So have you heard, has there been any response so far, or you've all known for probably a few weeks?
I don't know, I mean, I think she, we just got V C three to put it out there towards the end of last week, so I don't know if we've even had a chance to even see if there's any, or how that all works for sure, so.
And to my knowledge, they've had one meeting, I think.
One, yeah, okay. I think the next one is, I think it might be August first or it's early August, I think.
Yeah, and so again, and just to anybody watching this also, I mean, that's, feel free, um, if you're interested in, in being on the comprehensive plan committee, um, please, please come forward and, and either call city hall and find out any information that you need. But the more the merrier and everybody's welcome and, and we need the, we need the, the city in, input, so that'll, that'll only help with, with this. So, that's my little spiel to, the residents. Uh, okay.
Come help us out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, any other discussion on that, questions? Okay, be looking for the, uh, be looking for the- Sure. Survey, yep, so, okay, sounds good. Um, sixteen, um, Teresa was gonna do kind of a year of a fiscal year, have review, I don't know where she's at with that, so we'll take one.
It's just a good list of what, what's all been accomplished in the last year and what.
Yeah, it's, it's quite a list.
You know, if you stop to think back, we've kind of been brainstorming, there's a lot and-
Yeah.
I just think she, she's been, done a lot of legwork, I want her to be able to present that.
Yep, yep, that's, that's good.
You could hear.
Yeah, a year review and, and a list of accomplishments and, so yeah, we'll, we'll touch on that next meeting as well, so. Um, okay.
I'd just like to say that when I serve on a couple of boards with Teresa and she is a go-getter.
Yes.
She's a very fortunate town.
Yeah, yep, yep, but she's very willing to, uh, to, to be on other committees and around the colonies, so yeah, that's, yep, very much appreciated.
She breaks out.
Yeah, yep.
Thanks for that feedback.
Yep. Okay, uh, seventeen, any other business? Chief Miller, did you have any?
Well, the last time we talked, um, we were talking about parking issues on Emma Street.
Yes.
And I did speak with both landlords there, uh, somewhat went well, somewhat it did. So, so far- So, so far, they've, they've got the cars parked in front of garages and, um, a couple in front of the building. Um, one of the things I expressed to them was, I wanted to make sure there was plenty of room in front of the entrances to the buildings. We've kind of lacked on one of the buildings on doing that. Um, the, uh, roadway though is, is clear, so I'm kind of tickled with that. I still would like to move through forward with an ordinance that at least says they can't park on the, uh, west side of Amos in that, in that hundred block there.
Yep.
And, uh, and then I think, I want to do a little bit more research on front of those buildings, and at least try to look at something that we got eight feet or whatever it takes in front of the doorway to, so we can get, uh, ambulance cots through there or whatever. And I told them too, that they had to put the cars up right up on the building and by the door, when I talked to them, I'm like, this is, I said, if this car started on fire, I said, people in the building are trapped, you know, so I said, we can't, we can't have that, so I said, this is something that we need to work on. Um, and then also too, the superintendent of the schools proposed a, want, or not proposed, but he wants to do a parade route for the, uh, homecoming parade, and I did visit with the fire department tonight, we talked about a few different issues, but I also, you know, since they're part of the, their parade, is I'd like to see if we couldn't get one parade route for all three parades. And, and I, we talked because the school wants to go down Gillette Street, they said they've done it in the past. I said, my big concern is the safety with the angled parking, trying to get big equipment down there, and I says, you know, one kid runs out and then we're done doing parades. So I said, we've really got, and not that they can on other roads, but I said, this, you know, and I said, my understanding was, or I was, it was told that, you know, if you, those business owners come out and watch the homecoming parade when it goes down Gillette, which is nice, but I think the overall concern of safety, and then you got half days of, you know, your employees setting up and blocking roads off and, or parking spots off, and it just gets to be a lot of work. And I guess I'm trying to, my proposal would be, um, to have them start down there on the, the west end of west, or, uh, School Street, come all the way up to Main, go down Main, turn on Grant, go up in front of the fire station, all the way back up to DeGrove, make a right on DeGrove, and then end at the end of DeGrove there at, at Rich's house, and they either go right or they go left, and essentially the same place. And I said, I kind of talked with that, with the firemen, I said, you guys got your fire, you know, the fireman's for, or festival going, and I said, you guys take it all the way across the highway and then back up, and I says, that's great, on a great day, because you have sheriff's department here and, and all that, but I said, I really think that we need to do our parades with what resources we have, and not necessarily, we're always gonna have two people, two cars to do all that. So, I said, I, that's why, I said, I'd like to go Grant Street, and it shortens it up a little bit better, but, and I've only experienced being around one full parade there, and when the firemen, I mean, they eventually had to break off for a call, but that parade literally got broken half, and there was probably a half mile between. And I said, if you lived on the far north side, it's nice to be able to sit out in front of your house and watch it, but maybe, maybe if we got people to walk up or, or drive up another extra block and a half that could still get the parade without having to, so, I mean, I just kind of put it out there, I just like I said, I still wanted to get some more feedback from the fire department, you know, ultimately, that's your guys' decision, but I just think it would be nice to have just one parade route.
What was the feedback from the few firemen that you talked to?
You know, the, one of them said there's an ordinance on the length of cars, and, you know, some of these vehicles are a little long down here, and I guess I, I tried to do the enforcement as we can, but I really don't want to be out here measuring vehicles. So, I guess my point of the whole situation was, I want to make it easier on the employees, and that's why I want to shoot them down Grant, you know, and I guess all employees, myself included in that, so.
Okay. What's anybody else's thoughts on it?
I guess I have mixed feelings, you know, I completely understand what Bill's getting at, safety should be most important out of, out of the whole thing. But it's also nice, like you said too, that, you know, when you go by more and more, there's more people, maybe get to see an elderly that can't maybe get out. Um, I get it down Main Street too, but then again, it's nice because our businesses, let us paint the windows and do things like that too, so there's both sides to it.
Right, that's a big part of it with homecoming.
Yeah, as far as the homecoming's way down pretty that, I guess, so.
Right.
I, I mean, I completely understand all of those comments though, but I can see, I can see, kind of see it both ways, I'm, I'm not sure what, it's a great conversation.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, they're talking, you know, for, uh, homecoming, so it's not like you guys are gonna make a decision, we, we can continue the way it is. I guess I'm just trying to make sure, one, I understand all the parade routes, and what's all expected, you know, I mean, I did have, uh, we had a few little hiccups with the firemen's deal, and I, we visited about that tonight, but for the most part, I just kind of want to make sure we're all on the same page, and, and I want to try and do things with the resources that we have here in town, and not try to rely on everybody else to do our parade, so.
Yeah, the highway, the highway does make it bad, because it, it does, I, I agree with you there, it could cut it in half.
Well, it, it, I guess, when we had the, the fire call or the accident that was out, out in the county, and they all left, and then you're sitting there going, deputy's leaving, and now I'm, I'm here trying to still continue a parade, but, you know, and it's just like, yeah, this really isn't safest idea. So I guess that's kind of why I'm sitting here going, yeah, I'd love the idea if I was down on the north end of town to be able to watch it, but I'm sitting here going, yeah, realistically, we just don't have the resources to, to make sure this thing is done safely. So, I'm not saying we haven't had problems, or we will have had problems, I'm just, I'd like to try to just try to prevent it altogether, so.
No, I, I agree, I mean, I think it's, I think it's good to discuss, and, and, um, I guess, does any other council that has any thoughts on it? Um, I think we got a little, I think we got some time to.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
To think about it, talk about it, and that's, we don't need to make any kind of decision tonight, but, um, I think, first impression, thoughts?
Well, yeah, I, it comes down to manpower, I think, a lot of it, but the highway gets a little scary, because you got, you don't have officers there stopping traffic, you know, or whatever they can do. So, and by code too, I think on law enforcement, officers can stop traffic, you know, so you can't put firemen there or some volunteer to stop, stop traffic on a, on a highway, so, yeah, and we're sure cops everywhere, so that's part of the problem, but. I don't know, I just, I'm torn, like you, man, I don't know, I just. Guess me, I live on the parade, on the parade route, that's what I'm doing, you know, for all of it, right, and when I went down the other side, I was on it too.
Well, I just know that when, when they had the, uh, the accident, um, most were leaving there, probably about the time I was at the highway, coming back up by the, by the fire station. And the other part of the parade was just now getting to this down Main Street, so you have this, this long gap, and I, I guess, all parades have a bit of a gap, but that's the law for long.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I just, shorting it maybe a little bit too would help with that, so.
Okay, well.
I also have to think about it.
Yeah, 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 we can, we can, uh, just think about it in, uh, the, you bring it up, um, next meeting or in a month or.
So, then the other thing I had for you was, I did talk with, uh, my, uh, Spragueville over here about this LiDAR camera deal. And they seemed, I mean, they were probably of all the groups of people, the most, uh, weren't interested in doing camera stuff, but after I did discuss it with them, they seemed to be very open to it. And so what I'd like to do is, is have this representative come out and meet with the whole council, their coun, part of their council, or however they want to do it. And I, you know, said if we could meet here at City Hall, probably, you know, maybe next month, and at least just kind of listen to what he has to say. And I go, I don't know if you were here when I talked about it.
The same thing Miles is doing?
No, it's, well, yes and no, it's the same company, but it's a handheld LiDAR, so it would, basically, if you had it in your squad car, you'd just sit there at, let's say, West Park down there, or at the, at the park on the west end, and you just point it, and as these people go by, and if their speed is greater than what you guys want, they would get a ticket in the mail.
Yeah, I was, I was here, I remember that a lot, can I remember?
So, I mean, I, and I'm still, and I'm still not the best, biggest fan of this whole thing of cameras, but if I had to go cameras, I would like this idea, because I think it has, one, tickets are, or the fines are so high, and for, for a citation, it goes on, and a moving, you know, if you're getting on speed, it goes in a go-on here. Record is moving violation where this doesn't, and the fines are a little less, and I guess if nothing else, we could see if this makes a difference on School Street and the highway. And obviously with the system, it's only for those two, would be for those two roads, not every single road in town, but those two, and go from there.
I'm always open to, to, I guess, to new ideas, listen, but, you know, my first instinct is that's, we're a small town, I like to have that face-to-face contact. If you want to give somebody a ticket, I think it should be face-to-face, not send one in the mail and press an I O kind of guy, I'm just not.
Right, I know other towns that have had that, I mean, it's a very negative.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's.
Well, and then, and he's, he's going to a lot more, he was going to Durant, he was going to Marshalltown, obviously, you got one town about our size, one a little bit bigger, you know, and it's also, ultimately, your guys' decision, I just want to make sure that I bring to you all options, and then you make the decision from there. I mean, that's, you know, I'm not a fan of putting it on a pole and, you know, doing that by ordinance, you know.
I, I don't want to be closed-minded, but I'm sitting here, I'm not excited about it at all.
Yeah, I'd certainly listen to, see what you have to say, but.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm on the fence with it too, you know, one thing about stopping cars, you see if they're drunk, or they got warrants, and there's other things, um.
You know, you know, you just get to know people in the community and.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's not always the best one. Let's just get to know people, but, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Um, I would really like to look at those, and I gave Teresa some info, like, you know, where it shows your speed driving, you know, this is the speed you'd see all over.
The digital?
The digital, you know, I, I like to see, put some of them up, you know, because a lot of times you're driving down the road, you don't even realize you're going that fast, and then you see that thing pop up, then, oh, shoot, I'm, I'm slowed down here.
So like the trailer would have been something more permanent, you mean?
Yeah, and then, when I was at the police chief conference, they had, yeah, it's basically like the, the trailer, but they just go on a pole.
Yeah.
But then you can take it off that pole and put it on a different, just a rack, and you can put it.
Just solar power, isn't it?
Just solar power.
I'm amazed in the last six months, the amount of those I have seen in communities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're not.
Using tremendously, yeah.
They're not that much, and you could put these up, the guy I talked to, is you could put them up without any lights, and they could actually give you a reading to tell you if you really have a problem there or don't have a problem. Or if you put these up, a bill could look it up and say, okay, all the speeders are between this, the majority of speeders are from this time.
Oh, I get it, yeah.
Yeah, it's all data, so, okay, that's when they need to be focused on.
That would be nice information.
Usually rich ones are leaving for work.
Yeah, leaving for work, you know.
Well, see, if, and, and I like that, I like that idea, that when we, when we got the trailer out that we have, and we put it out, we've had issues with it, not keeping a good charge, and so did a little bit of work with that, but having it out there, you know, one of the biggest things when I first started was, you know, West Street is speeder, it's the kids, all the kids, speed down West Street, that's where it gets, so then we put the trailer down there, it slowed traffic down, we're out there stopping people, and I stopped one kid, everybody else was older than me. And a lot of them, you know, where I didn't, I didn't know that the speed was that, but it wasn't so much as being kids as it was older adults.
I agree with that.
So, as a law enforcement standpoint, older people like cops, so you kind of really don't want to make enemies with all the older people.
I think something needs to be done, I mean.
Yeah.
I think, and I don't want to problem this from this guy, but.
I, you know, I, I don't want to waste everybody's time, I mean, I just wanted to say, hey, if this guy want to come out and visit, I like the idea, if Miles wanted to do it and you guys did, we could use the same equipment, you know, that was always, and, and, and the big thing too was, and I, and I explained to Miles was, they're willing to pay us to use the equipment. So, you know, that, that pays us to be out here a little bit more, I don't want to say, but free on your part.
I guess I, something like that, I wouldn't be opposed to, but I think would have to be for me, sometimes, this is only done six times a year or whatever, special project, just to try to slow people down or whatever, you know, I don't think it's an every day or a good thing to me.
And he said there's a cost for that unit that they pay to rent it, and he's kind of like, if you're not using it, then we're not gonna, we're not gonna throw money away to a community that's not using the equipment that we, that we give them, and I, and I see that too.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, there's no cost to us, it's just if they're not seeing, obviously, a revenue.
Because they make, they make money on it.
Yeah, that's really, yes, for somebody that I don't know that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, for me, it's, I'm not saying my mind's set in stone, but it'll be a tough sell to convince me on.
And you live on School Street like I do.
Right, and I, yeah, something definitely needs to be done, I just, I don't know, that seems like the extreme option, which I don't know that we've exhausted other options yet, where we need to go to that.
So maybe it's something we, we look into, getting a, not permanent sign, but, you know, a sign that we can put on a pole. You know, we can, I think too, you know, and everybody, everybody has done it, you know, when they've gone by it and if they're speeding, you know, it's kind of embarrassing too, because every, I mean, everybody can see it, you know, anybody who's outside is like, oh, jeez, you know, that guy's doing forty-five in a, in a twenty or whatever, you know, and it's like, so.
Never had that happen. Never had that happen.
Liar. Um, so, maybe that's something too, you know, we should look into, um, and do, do they, does that company do anything as far as those kind of digital?
You know, I'll, I'll ask him, I mean, I'll, I'll email him and ask him, but I'm not sure, I mean, his company is run by, and he can tell you a little bit more, is by, or founded by a, uh, I don't know if he was a retired police officer or whatever, but he says, he's more geared towards school zones, um, and not just everything else, and he's kind of like, if we come in and do this project, and six months from now, it's cured the problem, we pack up our stuff and leave, so it doesn't have to be a, a permanent thing.
Sure.
So.
Okay, well, maybe I guess check into the, to the radar, um, the, the, the permanent, temporary sign one and.
Yeah, I agree, for speed trail on a small sign is what you're saying, right?
Basically, yeah, yeah, because I guess, and I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, kind of the, what I'm hearing from everybody is kind of the radar, the handheld radar thing would kind of be a, a no-go.
Yeah, I would be a solid no, but it'd take a lot to convince me, I think, I would like to do some other stuff first, and then, obviously, it's not.
Like Adam said, exhaust some other efforts, maybe, and what we can do to slow people down and.
Yeah, if we can invest in some of those, you know, this is the speed, this is your speed, a couple of little signs, and just not on School Street, just to hold there, but, you know.
Yeah, but that's the two biggest problems.
Yeah, I, I.
You know what I mean, and, and, yeah, that's, those are the two things that we, we have way more accidents in Preston than we should have. You know, I, I mean, not all from speed, but we definitely have more accidents than we should.
Okay, so I guess, um, I guess Bill will take that feedback and, you know.
Yeah.
Keep picking away at what you're doing.
Yep, yep. Okay, so, do you have anything else, Bill?
No, that was it, that's all.
Thanks for Bill, when you talk about, you know, parking and stuff down there, addressing that, and that's not always fun conversations, and you, you do see there was some strides made the last week down there too, so.
It looks a lot nicer, it looks, it looks, it looks sharper, and that's why I tried to explain to him when I was down there, uh, talked with the resident across the street, they're doing slow go, but they're, they're moving along, we have a few others that haven't done anything, um, some of them that have moved their stuff from one part of the house or the yard to the other part of the yard, so. Um, some of them that have moved their stuff from one part of the house or the yard to the other part of the yard, so, I mean, it's.
Keep being proactive like you are and, you know, making things safe because it, it is, uh, what we go is to make it safer and it is. It'll be safer to drive through there now, again, we're not where we wanna be, we've made some strides and, and I appreciate that, it was nice too, cause I had a conversation. And it's nice to know we're all, that the conversations you're having, we're, we're saying the same things. Uh, which is, which is what we need to be doing, we're on the same page and, and repeating, uh, the same thing, so that was good of us to do that. And cause we're, we're consistent.
Speaking of the parking down here, is that Gillette runs down?
Yeah.
To Geno's. Did anybody get a chance to look at that down there, or does it have any other more opinions on what we can do down that way?
I, I don't know, I drove by there several times, I drove by there on the way here. I think the one thing maybe I'd be a favorite, just like that, peninsula there that, you know.
Have the, the pie.
The pie there where the park is, maybe not parking there, but then I thought, I don't know, you get some. Parent that pulls up, got three kids, are trying to unload their kids and you're gonna make them park down, I don't know.
But they could park on this road over here on this, they don't have to park on Gillette, they still got that little diamond with the park, they just. They just park on the south side of it versus the, the north side of it, and.
And you're talking, you're thinking all the way down to the corner?
Just talking with the park, just that area.
That triangle again.
Just that, that's just that tri- just from this, from the tip of the triangle here, all the way down to where the s- the city property ends. And that resident has, you know, probably thirty feet for his driveway, maybe twenty feet, I, I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
But.
So how many houses would that affect, would be, I have one, a couple.
There's only two houses on that triangle. And, and I agree, if you're gonna do one side.
The whole tri- yeah, I would stop before, I would stop before the house. So you're just, I'm just talking from, from the, the tip of the park to the end of the park, not all the way down those others, they can still, they still could park there. But it would alleviate this long line of vehicles that are, you know.
Yeah.
Cause that is just like the driveways are on that too, you know, so it's kinda.
Yeah.
Inconvenient for them, but we, it's, we have to do something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that it, something needs to be addressed there.
And I, I guess with that, I mean, I, we, we kinda talked to, or I visited with you guys about. Uh, an ordinance on trailers and boat trailers and stuff like that, are, are we still somewhat on board on looking at, at least having something? Written up to.
I, I think.
Propose?
Yeah, I'd be behind that.
Yeah.
So, to have outdated tags and all that kinda stuff on vehicles that, you know.
Well, the vehicles, that would all be part of what we have now, it's, the whole thing is horse trailer here. You know, camper trailer over there, boats, two or three boats in a row, working on our boats in the road. You know, those kinda things would be, is what we're looking at.
Campers, yeah.
You know.
I get not everyone on driveway or whatever, but.
The, the road shouldn't be for storage, and, and I guess that's, that's the whole.
Right.
Now, if you've got these toys, then you either need to have a place for them, but the road's really not the place for them.
Well, and, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, but wheels or vehicles are made for concussion and accident and stuff, and trailers and fifth wheel campers pulling down and stuff. Or not.
Yeah.
Right. That, that's my biggest thing when it comes to that kinda stuff is, is the safety, I mean, you get, you never know, you get a boat trailer sticking. Sitting along and somebody, you know, isn't paying attention on their phone, whatever, and you get the tongue of that boat trailer, you know. Shoved into the front of the car, it's not gonna be good.
Well, if you got boats and trailers and campers off the street, that's more parking for other people to park their vehicles.
More congestion off the streets.
Off the street, it helps with cleaning the streets, it helps with hauling the roads.
Yeah, and I think we probably should look at maybe too is, is farm equipment too. And, and that was one of the biggest issues down here on Gillette Street. And I either got a cattle trailer out there or I got a tractor. And then I got people trying to get through because there's boats and cars on this side, and I got big, you know, and you're sitting going, again, we're trying to. You know.
I agree, that'll help, that'll help, but all the things we're talking about will help make things safer and majority of trailers will wider than a vehicle. So taking up more road space.
Right, and the consensus of talking with the folks, a lot of them are, you know, this is why. I think they have, they wanna use their farming way of life inside the cities and that's not working. So we need to try and say, well, this is the city, this is the way we need to do things, and when you're on a farm, it's a whole different category.
Yeah, I'd like to see some type of ordinance drawn up, I mean, I don't think that for, you know, reimbate the wheel, I mean, there's ordinances all over. I may just tweak it to what we need, but, yeah, unless you're doing construction work, then trailers can be there until it gets over.
Right.
Well, as we talked about last meeting too, there's, I think you should have a, as long as it's hooked to a vehicle, you should have a, a certain window, whether that's. Twelve hours, twenty-four hours or something, because you might have your camper hooked up, packing it up that night, you park it on the street and you're leaving it the next morning. I think you need to have a little consideration.
Yeah, yeah, get some flexibility.
You know, but it can't be there for, was it twenty, like I said, twenty-four hours or something maybe max, but give people some time to hook it up, load it up. Go tonight, go to sleep and get up next morning and take off.
I just wanna make sure we're not getting to the point where if we're doing that, that all of a sudden people aren't, well, just run the extension cord out. We'll power up the trailer and we'll spend the week out on the camper and, well, some of that comes down to discretion too, you, you know, you can make.
Oh, that's right.
A lot, but council, mayor can just, you know, discretion of the police department, hey, if someone's packing and loading, unloading.
Yeah.
It's pretty obvious what they're doing.
Yeah, it's obviously what they're doing, we're not gonna bother them, but if that thing's there for two more days, okay, then something needs to be done.
Yeah, you guys are out patrolling, I mean, you can tell, yeah, who the, who's amusing it, you know.
What, I, JT brought up a good point, him and I had a conversation, and you can't chalk tires anymore, so. And with that, you know, the whole, you know, twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours is kinda a little bit harder to enforce. Where with just having non, non twenty-four seventy police department, so I think we almost have to have certain hours. Because that way if we're, you know, it's eight o'clock, it's past, it's past six o'clock and it's, you know, at night and you're going, okay, well, obviously. You know, this isn't supposed to be here at this time, and those are a lot easier than to sit here and go, well, it hasn't moved all day. And nor do you have the time, or do we have the time to sit and watch the movement of everything? Because I do have one person down the street here that says, I moved it two inches because that's what I was told I had to do. And I'm like, I can't say you did, cause I have no way of, of proving.
Again, if it's hooked up to something, you know, discretion like you said, if it's, oh, not hooked up, obviously you're not loading up.
You're not loading it up, right. Well, yeah, the, the, the two hour parking stuff, we're running that in the corporate, it's like, okay, we have two hour parking for downtown. Right, area during this time period, well, we can't chalk tires anymore. Cause it's, you know, it's the constitution now to violate someone's rights, so. You basically have to have an officer sit on that to make sure it, it was there for two hours, right? Or you have to, if someone complains, you gotta like, okay, that complaint, then you're my witness, then I get, it's, it's a pain for. Seven dollars and fifty cent ticket.
Like I said, I went, I went to Casey's and got a pop, and I was gone for five minutes, I came back and worked again.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the, that's the problem you run into, so it used to be able to chalk tires, okay? You can do that, can't touch people's vehicles.
You used to put pennies on top of the tire, that kinda thing too?
Can't do any of that now, yeah.
Well, I guess see what you can come up with, Bill, and, and.
Okay.
And again, it, yeah, it is, it's gonna come down.
Yeah, but I think an ordinance on trailers.
Well, that's it, we've gotta have something that we can kinda fall back on and say, hey, you know.
At least give Bill the, you, we gotta give him the tool to go on.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Be able to enforce, enforce the stuff, yep.
How are we coming like on the residents down there across the departments, is already getting that trailer moved and cleaned up, what's our process or?
So, I guess I, I visited with them again Friday? Friday or Saturday, I can't be, it was just, wasn't as, probably as busy as, as McCooka, but we were, I had a lot going on. And I did visit with them, I said, they said everything is got, the, the vehicles are all currently registered and insured. Uh, I said, they moved, they sold the camper that was behind there. Um, and so I was like, well, let's see if we can move these vehicles to where maybe that camper was, but yeah, so they have. An old lawnmower and some weeds and I said, we need to clean this stuff up and I said, then I'll be back in a week and we'll, we'll go over it again. Um, they get some information about a company in McCooka that does salvage. And they figured they'd charge about two thousand dollars to, to come out and remove it. And then, so then I was speaking with them, they're like, it's the same people that we spoke with, so. And I get two thousand dollars is not a lot to some and a lot to others.
Yep.
So that's kinda where they're at, but I'm also sitting here going, it's your property, you're responsible for it, so. I'm kinda working with them and I says, you know, if the trailer takes a little bit longer to get rid of, I'm okay with that. But meanwhile, you've got all these other things that are simpler, let's try to get these things a little bit more up to. So, and I, like I said.
Progress is being made.
Yeah, because I've got one over here that's got more trash and weeds and he told me by the fourteenth, he's, he'll have it. Cleaned up and he hasn't, haven't gotten even really moved on it, so obviously it's gonna take more paper, paperwork on him. And, you know, I try to avoid having to go to court and have to spend attorney fees and all this to, to do this. I'd like to think people would just do it on their own at their own pace, but you kinda run into a problem with not doing anything, so.
Yeah, and just so we're, just so we're not, you know, nagging them, but we gotta stay on them.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, I've kinda got it written down, um, uh, Theresa did a spreadsheet on the addresses. You know, I kind of, and then she gave me a copy, so I'm kinda note-taking, you know, with that and say, hey, I spoke with these people, I. You'll revisit on this day, I'm trying to be reasonable with everybody, and it's documented to the point where it's not a ticket, but. If it goes to court, we're sitting here going, look, we, we talked to them back in, in May and they've done like, moved two cars, you know, then obviously, you know. We need to, to do more, I guess, you know, or, or if we go to court, you know, we've done our, we tried, you know.
Well, see how far you can get, I don't know, might have to get.
Yeah, some people you just can't, you mean, it's gotta get to that point before they.
Well, and, and I think it gets, gonna get to the point where we're spending money and I really trying to do it without us having to spend money as a city. To, to enforce the stuff and obviously it hadn't, you know, it's, it's kinda like everybody, we all kinda gather stuff over time and now we've, we're kind of like. Got too much stuff at a few people's homes, so.
Right. Okay, well, good deal, we, uh, I've pulled it out before, I appreciate having those conversations because I know, those aren't easy. So, look.
Can I ask Bill a question on something else? The, the dog bite, was that dog taken care of today?
Yeah, that's something I kinda wanna talk to the police committee about, a little bit more about that, but, you know, that's, yeah. It was taken care of, yeah.
Okay, I just, makes me squirm, you know, the kids running around and stuff.
All right, we've had problems too, they're, yeah, I'm good, so.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Cheryl? Council?
Jack, you got one?
No, no.
Okay.
Alrighty, sounds good, uh, in that case, I will ask for motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn immediately.
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Jason Thompson.
Yes.
Matt Peterson.
Yes.
Richard Peterson.
Yes.
Adam Rider.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, everybody.